Good morning, everyone. We're gonna call this September 27th, 2018 Planning Commission to Order. As with all meetings, we're gonna start our meeting with an edification. If everyone will pray with me, please. I have a follow you. Thank you with many blessings and opportunities you provide us each and every day. We say a special prayer for the first responders and those impacted, as well as those workers in the city here in the county as they deal with his flood issues and the water that you keep them safe and out of harm's way. You ask us, provide us guidance as we make the decisions best for the citizens of Rankin County. Be with those as these days continue, and we ask these things in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen. I'm gonna go ahead and suppose get started without me, let Mr. Mike Word give us an update on where everything is. Mr. Word.
Hey, Bob, before you get started, I just wanna say one thing. I was very impressed with Mr. Word's actions yesterday. He took command of the scene, and everything was organized.
I assume you're talking about City Pearl?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. I thought everybody understood where I was.
Well, there's a few out there I'm sure that probably done.
But also, our road department was just tremendous help for the city and still continues to be. So, thank you to both of you guys.
Thank you, sir. Good morning. Yesterday, as you obviously know, we had an event around the lunchtime hour yesterday in the city of Pearl. We had approximately 3.07 inches of rain that fell between the hours of 11:00 and 1:00 o'clock, but most of that rain fell within a 30-minute period, hence the flash flooding that we had. We believe we have somewhere in the neighborhood of about 100 homes that were impacted, about 25 businesses, and somewhere in the neighborhood of 75 to 80 automobiles. Yesterday, we had, the sheriff had a lot of people out, his folks with some high-water vehicles. We prepared four, or actually, it was about six high-water vehicles that were dispatched to the city of Pearl. Yesterday, we had two boats from the EOC. They were actually running down Patterson in about five foot of water with our rescue boats. We made about six rescues. The sheriff made somewhere between 19 and 23 with his high-water vehicles and his investigators with their four-wheel-drive vehicles. We had the, yesterday, we called some assistance in from MEMA. I had two area coordinators that came in. The director of MEMA actually was there himself with his PIO and three internal affairs people with MEMA. Those internal affairs people are there specifically to help the city of Pearl as far as what their citizens can do after the effects, what type of assistance is available to them. We're working on those as we speak now. We also have four statewide teams to do damage assessment. They were dispatched yesterday. They met at the office at 8:00 this morning. We've got another front that's in the process of coming through the city of Pearl right now, so we've held those folks off at my office until 12:00 o'clock today, at which point we can get out there and actually do some damage assessments, get that information sent back to MEMA, which will in turn go to the governor to see if we meet the threshold to get some type of assistance for the citizens of Pearl. So, at this point, that's where we stand. I did have a meeting this morning, obviously, at 8:00 with the fire chief and the police chief and the city works of the city of Pearl, and Dean Scott told me that the streets are right back like they were yesterday afternoon, with the exception of two streets from the rain that we've had this morning because everything is completely saturated. So, I feel like that water's gonna rise some more, and then we're gonna have to wait on it to go back down before we can put our crews in to do the damage assessments. Mike Harrison and his crew were out yesterday doing some evaluations on some streets, roads, bridges, and culverts, and I believe they're in the process this morning of trying to do some emergency repairs for them. Mike can speak to that as far as specifics on locations, how, what, when, where, and how much the cost of those are gonna be. So, Mike can speak to you on that. At that point, that's where we are, so we're still, obviously, out of the, up until this point, there is no rescue phase, so it's all damage assessments and see what kind of assistance we can get with the city of Pearl, so.
Questions?
Thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Harrison, you wanna address now, or you wanna wait till your normal time at the swap?
Don't matter, I'll go ahead and.
All right.
I wanna thank Mike Word and Sheriff Brian Bailey for their help yesterday. Couldn't have done it without. We got two bridges, I know, that are, we've closed right now. We're trying to do some repairs on them with the weather let up. I think we can get Old Brandon Road back open today if the weather does let up on us, but right now, we do have Old Brandon Road shut out on the State 8 end of it. We've got some other areas where inspecting some bridges on this morning. We just have to get some data together to find out exactly where all their bridges are over there, but we're working on that. Hopefully, by dinner, we'll have a good evaluation of where we're at on what's going on.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Harrison. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else? We're moving to the planning commission meeting. All right, Ms. Renee, you're on. Old business consideration for approval of August 30th minutes. Second, Mr. Cross. Second, Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign motion carries. Old business, does Ms. Renee need to go over anything old business for you guys?
Those are scheduled for Monday, and we have received a call in opposition on A, just one call, none of the others. We haven't received any calls on any of the others.
On this, on the church?
Yeah. On the convenience store in the agricultural zone on Highway 25 and Long Pine Church Road. That's the only one.
Ms. Renee, I had a group from that church, Long Pine Church, asked me to come speak and listen to them, and there were a big number of people there, and they were unanimous about not wanting a store that's gonna sell beer that close to their church.
Okay.
All right, anything else on old business? If not, we'll go on to new considerations, Ms. Renee, or new business.
It's gonna take me a minute to get there, just a second. All right, the first item under new business is a rezoning request for Mike Zatoni Incorporated on Highway 469. This property is located on the west side of Highway 469. Mr. Zatoni is seeking to rezone 77.67 acres from A1 to RE1. That's an aerial view of the property. He plans to subdivide the property into three lots containing 25.89 acres each, as shown here. All of these lots will have frontage on Highway 469. These are views of that property, and then these are surrounding properties.
I'm making sure to set that public hearing.
Motion by Mr. Har-
Second.
Morrison. Morrison, thank you. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign motion carries. Next, Ms. Renee.
The next is a conditional use permit for Entergy Mississippi Incorporated at 6021 Henderson Road. This property is located on the south side of Henderson Road. Entergy is seeking the conditional use permit to construct a 230-kilovolt electrical substation. They own two parcels here that total 5.601 acres, and it's zoned RE1A. That's an aerial photo of the property. Their system is overburdened, and the new substation will improve their existing service and allow room for future growth. This just shows their existing transmission line and the proximity to that property that they own on Henderson Road. These are views of that property, and these are surrounding properties.
I'm making motion to set a public hearing.
Motion, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign motion carries. Next, Ms. Renee.
Next is a conditional use permit for Gregory Crane at 443 Jim's Road. This property is located on the north side of Jim's Road. He's seeking the conditional use permit to mine no more than two acres. The property owners are getting him to dig a 1.5-acre pond. He plans to haul the dirt out for house pads in the county. It's a 22.84-acre parcel that's zoned A2. That's an aerial view, and this is the property where the pines, the pond will be dug. That's approximate location of where the pond will be dug. This is a view looking down Jim's Road, and these are surrounding properties. He has got his paperwork with DEQ for a four-acre exempt.
I'm making motion, we said it. I have spoke with him, and he knows that he needs to get in there and speak with the neighbors. Those people are, a lot of them are related to each other, and they watch what's going on, and they do have opinions, so he knows to make sure they know everything that is going on.
Motion, Mr. Gaines. Second, Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign motion carries. Next, Ms. Renee.
The next item is a conditional use permit for Robert Langford at 115 Little Woods Road. This property is on the corner of Little Woods and Arnold Drive. Mr. Langford is seeking the conditional use permit to place a new double-wide manufactured home as a second dwelling on this property. The home will be for his son and daughter-in-law. That's an aerial view. You can see their existing home. The application stated that there were medical conditions that his wife had and that she needed someone to assist her during the day. It's a five-acre parcel. It's zoned RE1. This is a view of the Langfords' home on Little Woods Drive, and then this is their property as it runs along and borders Arnold Drive. This is an approximate location of where the manufactured home would be placed, based on their site plan, and this is a view from the corner of Little Woods and Arnold. This home is to the west of the Langfords' home on Little Woods, and then these are homes on Arnold.
This is touchy. And the reason that I say that, we have approved a subdivision that's an upscale subdivision just next to this, and one of the things that was adamant on the developer and the people that are buying lots is that there be no mobile homes. This is not zoned for a mobile home. Now, we'd have to change it or give a conditional use. I think I would rather have maybe some conversation with the owners, maybe some things that I don't know, that I'd like to know, but from the pictures, and I drove by just trying to look, the place isn't as well-kept as some of the others around it already, and a trailer behind it may not, may not help matters.
We're just setting a public hearing.
So, you don't have to. I was thinking, say, do we have to set the public hearing until I can, I'd rather not set it yet.
You always have that screening opportunity, you know, some more expensive plants, some trees to kinda help screen the mobile home from the adjoining. There's some high-water lots across the street over there. I ran across one not too long ago.
Yeah. But look, I mean, I don't know how, if we were to do this.
You're being asked to set a public hearing. There has to be a motion and a second on that. Has anybody made a motion on that?
No.
Or is there any intention on anybody's part to make a motion to set this a public hearing? Okay, with that, then, Ms. President, I think we'll move on.
I think we won't go deep back unless we have a public hearing.
Well, I think let Mr. Gaines have the conversation with him first, and then he can come back and reply. I'll let the record reflect no actual mistake in on this particular item. All right, Ms. Renee, next.
The last item is a conditional use permit for Dixie Doll at 125 McKay Hill Drive. This property is located on the north side of McKay Hill Drive. Ms. Doll is purchasing this property, and she is seeking the conditional use permit to operate a doll grimming business. It's a 1.70-acre parcel. It's zoned RE1. That's an aerial view of the property, and this is a view of that home that's on the property that she plans to purchase. This is a view just of Highway 471. This is the home, and she does have a concrete drive and some concrete parking, and then that's the patio area that they plan to enclose for the business. She proposes hours of operation as Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. She has contacted neighbors in the area, and none are opposed. This is a view of an adjoining property.
How many dogs could be there?
I don't know how many yet, 'cause she's not in business here. This is family land. I think everybody in there is related to one another. Isn't it zoned agriculture?
No, it's zoned RE1.
RE1, okay. I know they have some agriculture, animals around, a good many, and it comes out on Highway 471. I don't think you're gonna be able to see it really from the road. I'm making motion, we said it.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Gaines. Second, Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign motion carries. Next, Ms. Renee. I'm sorry, site plan architectural review.
We don't have any today.
All right, Mr. Slade, I think it's yours and Mr. Morrison's game today.
Yes. Appears we're gonna pick on Jared this morning. The first item under the nuisance property section of our planning commission agenda is the Gladys Daniel nuisance property at 927 Poplar Springs Road, District 1. We'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask Ms. Renee to demonstrate with the photographs.
Okay, so, we received complaint May 1st of 2018 about inoperable vehicles, rubbish and debris, and dilapidated vacant manufactured home. These pictures were taken June the 11th of this year. The certified mail was sent, and both letters were received, and I believe Mr. Jones has been contacted by the property owner. These are the new pictures that were taken September 29th. There hasn't been any real change.
Okay, at this time, we'll ask if there's anyone here to speak on the Gladys Daniel nuisance property. You'll come forward, please. You'll need to state your name.
I'll go in the microphone, please, sir.
You'll need to state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Pat Daniel, and I'm a son of my mother's here, but now he have some new pictures that he took the early part in this week. He been out, so we've been cleaning up, and all the grass is gone. We was using, we was using that as a storage. That's all. As you can see, it's a, I can't do anything with the property, which I talked with him, I believe it was Tuesday. He come out while I was working. I can't do anything with the property. I have this electric line coming across, cutting my property out. Also, I got a water, main water line that's 50 feet inside of my property. So, what I was trying to do was cut it down, make a U driveway all the way around, and I really can't do anything with the property, which I told him the other day. I am gonna remove all of this within 45 days if I may.
What are you gonna, what are you gonna remove? What you talking about?
I'm gonna remove everything. If I can get a-
Clean the whole, you gonna clean the whole hill?
I wanna start over, clean the whole thing up, but it's some, it's some additional things need to be done, which is only .9 acres. So, when light line is coming across, I can't put a trailer or anything under the light line, and then I have a water, the main water line that I have addressed that really need to be removed, or I can't cut my place down and get it out.
That's the main water line from the water company?
Yes, sir.
Is that their main line?
Yes, sir, and I have, for two years, been, I done dug it up, I done tried to cut a driveway in. Every time I do, I cut down 80 inches. I'm hitting the main water line, which is 50 feet inside of my place, and I am working now to remove everything. That don't look like that now. It's no grass, no anything, but I am gonna move the structure. But I wanted to come in, and I'm sorry, and I apologize, I do work out of town, and as of tonight, and I was with him on that, but it don't look like that now. He told me he was gonna turn the pictures in. He came two days in a row, and I had men, I done working, I done dished it all the grass down. That's all I could do was dished it under, and it do not look like that now, and I have moved the vehicles around and lined them up, but they will be gone too.
What about the building, right?
The building is gonna be removed. Working on removing it, and the only thing, I'm asking for a lenient time. I'm going to work the storm, and I'll be gone four weeks at a time, and I come home for five days possible at a time, and if I can get some additional days, I will have that structure, whole structure removed, and I'm hoping I can get some help or somebody to come out. That light pole right there that you see, it stopped. It dropped, it broke, and it stopped three inches from that trailer, and I asked them at that time, which was last year when they had the storm, could they please remove it over the fence, which was behind them trees down, 'cause they only run cattle over them, and my property is cut off. It's nothing I could really, you know, really sanctify and do with the property.
But good luck trying to get them to move it, 'cause I had, I wanted to move one when they were redoing the wires, lines, one time, just from in my yard, about 30 feet over across the fence.
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't touch it. It stays right in the yard.
And I only have a .9.
I know what you're saying.
But I will get it cleaned up if y'all give me additional time.
You know, I want to point out, you know, I'm born and raised down there. Poplar Springs, you know, used to not be anybody on there.
Yes, sir.
And now you got a lot more traffic on there.
Yes, sir.
That's where, you know, it's just, at one time, you're kinda like out of sight, out of mind.
Yes, sir.
And now you got a lot of traffic on there, a lot of people building there, and that's where all this kinda comes up, and you're not the only one on Poplar Springs that has been notified.
Yes, sir.
Nobody singling you out.
I understand.
But what we'll, what we're gonna do, we'll go ahead, and this is just normal process.
Yes, sir.
We declared a nuisance, and that way, and they gives you, that gives you plenty of time to get what you want done.
Yes, sir.
But it's already been declared, but if you don't do it, then automatically it goes on to the court system.
Yes, sir, I understand.
And so, what I'm saying, it's still gonna give you time to work on it, 'cause it's a process that has to go through. So, what our normal procedure is to do just that, and like I said, not singling you out or any different than anybody else. But we, so I'm gonna go ahead and declare the nuisance, and that'll still give you time to continue doing, and as long as you, you're making some positive progress, that goes a long way.
Okay, and I appreciate that.
Can you tell us your address?
My address is 927 Poplar Springs Road, which we didn't, thank you.
There's a motion to declare this a public nuisance by Mr. Morrison. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign motion carries. Next, Mr. Slade.
In case we didn't close that public hearing, it's closed. Item B is the James and Stacy Acocks nuisance property at 779 Poplar Springs Road, this is District 1 as well. We'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask Renee to demonstrate.
All right, so we received a complaint here, May 1st of 18, in regard to inoperable vehicles, uncut grass, abandoned structures, and rubbish and debris. The certified mail was sent and received. These pictures were taken May 7th of this year. And these are the new pictures that were taken on the 24th.
At this time, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak on the James and Stacy Acocks nuisance property. Anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter. We'll close the public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate for you to act.
I'm surprised nobody was here. Okay, well, in that case, we don't have any choice but to go and declare the nuisance, and I think we need to move on a little more aggressively with this one there, since no one's even here to speak for it.
Motion, Mr. Morrison. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign motion carries. Next, Mr. Slade.
Item C is the Lisa Gibson nuisance property, 5912 Grant Street Roads, District 2. We'll open that public hearing. At this time, I'll ask Renee to demonstrate.
All right, so we received the complaint, June 7th of this year. It was in regard to inoperable vehicles, rubbish and debris, and tall grass. The letters were sent, and the mail was received. These pictures were taken September 17th. Now, there is an existing business on this property that's been there and predate zoning, but we have received complaints in the past on this same property. These are the new pictures that were taken on the 26th.
I am Lisa Gibson. I'm sorry for the nuisance. You could go sit down. Would you ask-
I thought you missed it, Dwayne.
Would you ask her to go sit down, please?
Hold on just a second. We'll face, we'll go through it.
Okay.
Give us just a second. Ms. Renee, get finished.
That's it. These were the last of the pictures on that.
If you will start with your name and address, please, for me, that would be helpful.
Thank you. I am Lisa Gibson. My address is 375 Love Cove, Brandon, Mississippi. That is my property right there. It is a nuisance. I have reported, I got this letter. Thank y'all. I'm so sorry that it looks like that. I really do apologize. I have started, I got with the Sheriff Department, so we, they have declared this as a landfill. I did not know. They have, I mean, I got pictures where they done moved dirt, put rubbish upon different stuff. I had no idea. I am in the process of getting them removed from the property.
You have renters there, is that right?
No, no.
Timmy, hold on. We're gonna hear. Just explain me, give me up the speed on it.
Let me show you. My dad.
Okay.
Lost his property. I bought it. Okay. Here's the deed of trust where he lost it. There's where I bought it. Okay. There's everything right there. What I did was, my brother-
Mark, you can go back to the podium.
Come back to the podium. Everybody can hear you.
So, I allowed them to stay there. But he just did this, and when I would not sell it to him. And I guess I got a letter, y'all get, y'all sent me a certified letter that I did not get. I went, and I got this letter. So, I have sent them letters to move, but this was bad, I guess. It wasn't quite that bad, but it is really bad now. So, I have, I'm in the process of working with the lawyers and working with Rankin County, because I have, they have thread me. I got that for Rankin County. So, I'm in the process of getting all this done right now. So, I'm in the process of cleaning it up, but I got to get them off.
Sure.
So, I can get it cleaned. So, that's what I'm in the process of doing. But I am sorry that it looks like that. It looks worse now, so, and of course, the property across from it, I'm sure that Mr. Bobby has reported it in the bag. I'm sure that the people, that the builders-
Across the street?
Yes, definitely are reporting it. You can't build a subdivision with a nuisance area like that. It's a sore sight, has no business looking like that. There are three people, it is two businesses up there. Those dump trucks are not supposed to be there. As today, from the hearing, when I finish with the hearing, the Sheriff Department and I are going out there, we are going to get rid of that. If any dump trucks, they have, they have been notified. Any dump trucks, anything that's on that land is getting, is-
All right, so here's what we'll do today. And Mr. Slade, correct me if I get out of line on this. What I'll do is, we'll just table it for now. I'm gonna give you time to deal with, Mr. Slade, I think this is more of a civil issue between the two parties at this point. So, I'm gonna give you a chance to clear that all up on however you wanna do that, and then give you some time to get this area cleaned back up for me.
Thank you so much.
So, once we get that done, then if we still don't have the property cleaned back up, and we ain't done it in a timely fashion and manner, obviously. But get your civil issue worked out on the people on your property.
Right.
Once you get that worked out from this point, if we still have an issue, we'll bring it back in front of the board as a nuisance on that. Tell me my parameters on that.
It seems to me that what we're dealing with here is a dispute over the ownership, the underlying ownership of the property. That's, that's going to create some issue for us in terms of trying to address who actually is responsible.
Of the nuisance, that's right.
I'm not satisfied based on the documents that you have here. I can't possibly tell who could possibly be the owners of this property. We would need that to be addressed, and so that's gonna create an issue for us moving it up to Justice Court, because unfortunately, the Justice Court judge is not gonna be in any better position than I am right here, trying to figure out who owns the property and therefore who is responsible for its condition. Anyone who is claiming an ownership of the property needs to be proactive to get rid of the nuisance situation, because it's part and parcel of property ownership to make sure that you're compliant with the land use regulations for camp. So, I would just encourage anybody that thinks they have an ownership claim in there So I would just encourage anybody that thinks they have an ownership claim in there needs to make sure that that piece of property gets, the condition of that property gets addressed. Maybe putting this off, I would suggest to you that this is not the kind of evaluation, who owns the property, that's not something that can be done in thirty days.
Right, right.
I would suggest that we push it off farther than that, and then that we have Renee and Wayne monitor where we are in the process of determining ownership.
Yeah, here's one, here's one thing I'd like to ask you to do. I'll put something down, or we can put it off to the first of the year, that'll give me January, but what I would like for you to do is talk back to our Building Department officials, Renee and Dwayne's office, on a monthly basis, and get them up to speed where we're at.
Okay.
Just so we can, so we can understand how that comes in. Dwayne, how's that sound? Is that, Renee, good with you on that same point? And that way, it gives you time to deal with your civil issue on the actual owner of the property.
Okay.
The next step from this point here is if we can't get it cleared off, obviously it goes to Justice Court, and then they get involved with the upkeep of the property at that point. So we're trying to keep that from happening, for you to get the situation cleaned up on your part as far as who owns what and how the property lies.
That's fine, that's fine. I mean, I retained a lawyer to take them to civil court. So, I have took the proper steps to do all of it.
Bottom line, though, it still needs cleaned up.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I'm on my way, I'm on my way to clean it now.
Well, sure, and that's part of the issue at the same point, too.
I'm on my way.
It needs to be cleaned up.
I am. Don't worry.
Mr. Slade, do I need a motion for any of that to table it to January?
I would simply ask that we have a motion to table, that we revisit this issue at the first opportunity in January that we would have.
Yeah, and also, if you would, just be sure the Building Department has your contact information, well, they can get in touch with you also.
Okay.
And also their contact information, where you maybe could just touch base with them monthly.
Okay.
And let us know the status of this situation.
I will.
Okay, so that'll be my motion, Mr. Slade.
Motion to table this to the first public meeting in January, Mr. Slade. Second, Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Mr. Slade.
In the event we did not close that hearing, it's closed.
All right.
The next item under the nuisance section is the Jerry Ivy nuisance property at one eighty-two Tazan Avenue, this is District One. We'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask Renee to demonstrate photos.
All right, so we received a complaint here July twentieth of twenty-seven, no, I'm sorry, we received a complaint on this property February ninth of twenty eighteen. It was for inoperable vehicles, rubbish, and debris. These pictures were taken August the fourteenth of twenty eighteen. Our letters were sent, and they have been received. The property has grown up to vehicles. And these are the new pictures that were taken on the twenty-fourth. There is a house back there also.
This one hasn't. This is a, I'm familiar with this. This has been, I guess, a building for a long time. There's a lot of factors in here, and I might get Dwayne to speak as far as where we are. Part of the problem is there is, she can't afford to do a lot of things. And there is a ditch there that is a common ditch. I mean, it's a, it's not our ditch. And when they built this place, they put culverts in and whatever, and it's then become the homeowner's responsibility, and there are numerous ones down there that have had to build bridges or add, we're talking big culverts, six foot. She's not been able to, and it's probably eight years trying to help her what we can, and it's really, our hands are tied because it's not our ditch. So, it's gotten worse. And I think, Dwayne, you've spoken to her, and she's been trying to do what she can. I don't know, she doesn't have any real family that can help her, and I don't think pushing it to Justice Court at this time is going to help anything, because she's gonna be one of these situations, I just can't. So as long as she's trying to do something, the big problem is, there's, she can't even drive across the ditch to get, and right now, rain like today, I'm not sure how she's even getting over there. It's a, it's a, I've even tried to find her something myself, that she can have somebody put in, not been able to, but I don't, I don't really know that declaring the nuisance is moving it or not. Dwayne, have you talked to her, read, I mean, what, kind of where did you, you leave it when you, y'all spoke to her last?
I spoke to her this morning, and she's, they are working on it, they're just.
Slow.
Slow. But, but she is making progress. She's got some culverts now to put in the ditch.
Yes.
But just won't, the rain won't quit, and she said she had to swim the ditch this morning to try to get out, so.
I mean, she's, she's not exaggerating. It's a major ditch there, and that whole area was, was done that way with culverts back in the day, and they sold those lots across it. And most of them have mobile homes across them, and like I say, I know, I've been called on several of them, they, some of them have actually built bridges or got their own culverts and, and done their own thing, but it's, it's there again, it's their responsibility, and it's unfortunate we can't help them. So in this case, I guess, I'd like to, I'd rather not declare the nuisance, I'd like to give her what, what do you think? I mean, what, you, you've talked to her.
They're working on her and her neighbor, so, I mean, it's just what you'd be comfortable with, sixty days, ninety days?
I think we'll look at it different, sixty, and let's look at it, sixty's gonna push it up, that's gonna push it around December, I see. First of November, yeah. Well, let's do it sixty, and then look at it then, and see how things are going. I'd like to say that I think declaring a nuisance is just, I mean, it's gonna be what it is. Not gonna, you're not gonna gain anything.
Jared, if I may, for the purpose of the record, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here to speak in the Jerry Ivy nuisance property considerations. Anyone here to speak on that? Okay, I just wanted the record to be clear that we gave an opportunity for, for someone to appear on that matter. I think what I hear Jared's suggesting is a likewise, a motion to table for some period of time. We set the other one, Jared, for that first January, I would suggest this one may be appropriate, just set it the same way, first January meeting, opportunity.
But I.
We'll continue to monitor.
And the same thing, I want, I'd like to see it monitored, make sure that she just, I think we've gotten, I'm over the hump. She needs to keep on doing what she can do, and I understand the whole situation. I've talked to her personally, I've been out there, she's been to my shop, I mean, I know, and this has been going on for years, and she's asked for help, and, you know, we can't, unless somebody, I can find somebody to donate something, I've not been able to do anything. So I'm, I'm sensitive to this situation. In fact, she called me and was worried that she was gonna get booted out of her home. I said, no, nobody's gonna do that, they just want you to start cleaning up some.
So there's a motion to table, I believe, to, we're gonna close public hearing for the record.
Yes, sir.
There's a motion to table this until the first public meeting in January by Mr. Morrison. Second, Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Mr. Slade.
Item F is the Karen Pruitt nuisance property, one sixty-one Luann Street, again, District One parcel. We'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask Renee to demonstrate.
So, we received the complaint October twenty-fourth of twenty seventeen. This has been an ongoing nuisance of this property dating back to two thousand eight. There used to be a manufactured home on the property that has been removed, but they left some rubbish and debris here. The complaint was about just a lot needing to be cleaned up. We did send the certified mail, and both letters were received. We've not had any contact. These pictures were taken November fifteenth of twenty seventeen. And these are the new pictures that were taken on the twenty-fourth of this month.
At this time, I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak on the Karen Pruitt nuisance property considerations. Anyone on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Well, since nobody's here, and I don't know anything about it, other than nobody's contacting me or anything, I'll, again, declare the nuisance.
Second. Motion of Mr. Morrison to declare the nuisance. Second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Mr. Slade.
Yes, we, item G, and you can see that there's, there are five items that involve the same property owner, but we will take these individually. Item G is the Ken Townsend, Townsend Enterprises nuisance property, two seventy Rolling Hills Boulevard, District One. We'll ask Renee to demonstrate.
We skipped E.
All together?
We skipped E.
I'm sorry?
We skipped E.
We skipped D?
E is an.
D's a D or E?
I thought we got E.
That's a rough man right there, Mr. Slade.
Oh, my.
That's your first mistake, you almost made it the year.
My pictures would be way out of order if we don't catch up to it.
Oh, so blame it on.
Okay, so are we on E now?
I'm sorry.
Is that what we're on?
Backing up.
I thought we were on E. Okay, let's go back to E. Jerry Ivy nuisance property, one eighty-two Tazan Avenue. I promise, I thought we'd covered that one.
I don't think.
I thought we did D's. The hell, I wouldn't.
No, we went to Valerie and then skipped over to.
Very good. I don't know what happened. So why don't we do Jerry Ivy, Tazan? Okay?
All right, so we received a complaint July twentieth of twenty seventeen about grass and vacant abandoned manufactured home on this property. The letters were sent, and they were received. These pictures were dated August seventh of twenty eighteen. And then these are the new pictures on the twenty-fourth. There hasn't been any change.
So for the record, I'm asking if there's anyone here to speak on the Jerry Ivy nuisance property considerations. Anyone to speak on that? Okay, Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Again, same thing, I don't know if it's different, declaring a nuisance.
Second. Motion of Mr. Morrison to declare the public nuisance. Second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Mr. Slade.
All right, I think we're back on target here. Item G, Ken Townsend, Townsend Enterprises nuisance property, two seventy Rolling Hills Boulevard, District One property. We'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask Renee to demonstrate.
Okay, so we received a complaint about grass and an abandoned manufactured home on this property. These pictures were taken July tenth of two thousand eighteen. The mail was sent, and the letters were received. These pictures were taken on the twenty-fourth, and the manufactured home has been completely taken down and the lot cleaned up.
At this time, we'll close that public hearing. Is anyone here to speak on that matter?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's clean. All right, very good. We will close the public hearing, and at this time, it'd be appropriate to, to let the record reflect that no action's taken on that matter. Item H is the Ken Townsend, Townsend Enterprises, three eighty-one Sunny Lane, this is District One.
All right, so this complaint was received July the tenth of this year about a roofing business operating in this building on the property. The letters were sent and received. These pictures were taken July tenth. And then these are the new pictures on September twenty-fourth. I believe Dwayne has spoken with the, Mr. Townsend, owned one of these lots, I believe, and he has since sold it. But it's zoned RMX, so, you know, business use is not allowed.
All right, Mr. Townsend, do you have anything to say with respect to this particular consideration?
I can show you proof of following up the deed. It's all right.
All right, when, when did the transfer of ownership occur?
Yesterday or today?
No, it was.
I'm not sure when you did.
Come on up, Ken.
So, what we will need to do with, with the proof of ownership, I'll take a look at it after we do that. With the proof of the change in ownership, the new fella just bought himself a lawsuit possible, so I will have Renee make contact with the new property owner, advise them of this nuisance condition, and try and see to it that they get it into compliance.
Okay.
So we take no action on this?
No, okay. We don't have the owner in front of us to take action on, and we need to go through the process of getting the owner in front of us to take action on.
So will it be a zoning issue, or?
Potentially. There's multiple issues that go with the property. So, for Mr. Morrison's sake, I hope he knows by the property owner of what was going on.
He actually had just finished paying it off. When I sent him the letters about this, he got angry and said, I'll just pay it off, which is good for me.
Yeah, okay, so hopefully he, he's got full notice of what's happening.
He, he is the person.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. President, if I can, we just need to reflect on the record that no action's taken in this matter, we'll close that public hearing, and no action's taken.
Okay. The next item is item I, Ken Townsend, Townsend Enterprises nuisance property, one forty-six Sunny Lane, again, District One.
Actually, this is District Three.
Oh, it is? Okay. And so we will, we'll open that.
Just want to clear that up.
So that was my mistake.
You just sold that device.
I didn't have, I was just gonna go, this wasn't all one today.
Very good.
The road separates, you go down that road, that's on the right.
We almost had it for the end of the period. It's all right.
You weren't speaking up. You just sold me on the right.
I didn't say a word.
Okay, so we'll, we'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask Renee to help us with the photos.
All right, we received a complaint here May twenty-third of twenty eighteen about tall grass, a vacant home, rodents, and snakes. These pictures were taken July the tenth. The certified mail was sent and received. And these are the new pictures that were taken on the twenty-fourth. It appears Mr. Townsend's trying to get this one cleaned up and taken down as well.
I like the way you cut the grass, Ken.
Yeah. So with the, with the demonstration of photos most recently here, and the, and the evidence that activity is occurring, Jared, well, Mr. Bob, would there be any reason to do anything other than to table the consideration of this until all of it has been completely addressed?
Works for me.
All right, so I would ask that we, that we table it, we've been tabling everything to that first January, does that seem reasonable, Bob?
That's not.
Okay.
That work you can, that timeline?
Yeah, it's pretty clean.
And I make a motion, we tabled it to the first public meeting in January. Second, Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Mr. Slade.
If I fail to close that public hearing, let the record reflect it's closed. Item J, Ken Townsend, Townsend Enterprises nuisance property, one fifty-three Valley Cove, District?
Three.
Three. Go ahead, say it, Slay.
Three, okay.
Tap dancing around. Cat's eye of the ballot now.
We received a complaint here June 2nd of 2018, tall grass, vacant manufactured home. The certified mail was sent and received. These letters are dated July, I mean, these pictures are dated July the 10th of 2018. And these pictures were on the 24th, so mobile home's been taken down and it's gone and the lot's been cleaned up.
With your permission, Mr. President, we'll close that public hearing and we will let the record reflect that no action was taken or necessary.
All right, it works.
Item K is the Ken Townsend, Townsend Enterprises, 167 Valley Cove.
District Three.
All right, the complaint was received here July the 10th of 2018 in regard to inoperable vehicles, rubbish, and debris. I think we've worked this property before. The letters were sent and received. These pictures are dated July the 10th. And these are the new pictures that were taken on the 24th.
Is this, Mr. Townsend, do you still own this property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Do you have anything to address with respect to what we're seeing here?
The property you're looking at now, the person only owes about $700 more on the property. I do not have the right to go on his prop, on my property and take his stuff off of it. So, there's a law there that...
So, why is it supposed to be paid off?
It should have already been paid off. But because of the delinquent taxes and we have to pay the waste management billing on the properties, as long as it's in our name, he is, his loan is paid off. But he owes us for his back taxes and garbage billing. And so, I will not release the deed until, but to clear our name, the $700, it doesn't matter. I could deed that one over to him tomorrow too, and y'all could deal with him.
I think I'd do that if I...
Yeah, but I'd like to get your money, though.
Yeah, I would love to get my money.
Well...
So, there's some...
He could always do it, actually, deed of trust, you know, in lieu of the deed. I mean, in exchange for the deed, get you, if you want to. Or we can table this to the January one meeting, because you have one other one that we've tabled to the January one meeting, and maybe by then, he's got, you cleared it up, and you transferred it to him, and then we could address it with him.
Yes, sir.
Does that work?
I did send him certified letters, and he did receive it and sign for it, and no action has been done on his part.
Well, what if we sent him one, even though he's still owns it?
Well, he can't do nothing until he has it.
Well, I know, but he'd have it in hand.
Now, but he, the property owner is responsible for the condition of the property. And the issue of whether or not the actual owner is impeded from being able to address the condition of the property is not the county's problem. It's the property owner's problem. And there are ways to get access to that property. Mr. Townsend can go right into Justice Court and initiate civil action and get the right to get on that property and get it cleaned or addressed. So...
Because it actually is his property.
That's correct. And clearly, he has an interest in the property. So, Mr. Townsend's desire to want to see the $700 realized before he transfers ownership is a choice that he gets to make. He can choose to do that, but he has to deal with us on the nuisance side in order to maintain that claim. So...
You think...
I would suggest getting the property deeded over to the tenant, so that the tenant becomes the owner, is well worth the $700 that you would leave on the table.
Well...
Doesn't sound like the guy's really wanting to help.
He's got...
He came with me two or three years ago about the same property. So, it's not a, it's nothing new.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, that puts us in a bind. We've got the property owner in front of us, and you've got the evidence of what appears to be violations of our...
You think he's going to pay you the, I mean, is he indicated he's going to pay you for the garbage bill and the back taxes?
If he wants his deed to his property, but I will waive that by December or...
Yeah, but you feel like he's going to do that?
Well, is there really any incentive on his part?
Exactly.
I mean, he doesn't really care, as long as he's living there, you know?
Does he have a problem getting a tag?
He shouldn't, because I pay his, I pay it. But I have a problem getting a tag if I don't pay his bills.
That's right, right.
So, you know, here we go again. Yeah.
Normally landlords who aren't getting paid evict tenants.
Right.
That's what ought to happen here. There ought to be an eviction action initiated, which presses the issue of getting the $700 cleared up, which transfers the ownership, which puts us in a position where we can now...
That's how I did it. But, but, but when you, when you owner finance or lease purchase the property and they put their own trailer on the property, you cannot evict someone from their trailer. I've tried it. And that's a law I wish would change. Because that's the problem with that other trailer on one something or another. That was not our personal trailer, our land, but we had to wait for, to a specific time that I was allowed to remove that trailer because of repo people and everybody else can come back on the property and say, "No, we were going to repo that trailer. You tore it down." And they turn around and sue us.
Eviction's not the only game in town. That's one option. The Chancery Court can address these other issues about how we get somebody's trailer off of my property. So, Justice Court may not be able to deliver all of the relief that Mr. Townsend needs. I don't know why I'm having this conversation, but anyway, I'm helping you guys understand.
Well, I'm trying to, because I'm trying to think, how come he can't tell the guy he's got to move because he...
I'm going to bring this to a head, if you don't mind. I'm going to make a motion, we table this to the first public hearing in January. Actually, give you 90 days, Ken, to come to some kind of resolution with it, you know? If you work with him to get him moved, whatever you need to do. I mean, it gives you time to do it. And that kind of coincides with the other property you got there, too. So, I'm making that motion.
Second, Mr. Cross, any discussion?
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Mr. Carries, Ken, we appreciate you coming and working with us. KL, if my alphabet's right, Mr. Slay or Miss Renee, whoever?
That's item L, Ms. President, and it is a review matter with respect to certain businesses that are on Old Fannin Road about the gravel drives that act, or, yeah, gravel drives, plural, that access the properties. And Ms. Renee's going to give us the names of each of the businesses that were notified of this review matter.
Okay, so it's Mudbugs, Cockrells, Farmer's Market, Global Screen Printing, and Old Fannin Autoplex.
Okay, so we're five businesses...
Cockrells shouldn't have been on that list.
No, there was four. Four, four.
Four, okay.
Cockrells should not have been included with that.
Hey, and let me, let me add, you're going to open it up, Slay, or...
Yeah, so I just wanted to make it clear on the record who all was invited to be present here. The reason that the Cockrells was invited to be here was because we didn't want to leave anyone out who actually has customers that are accessing this area, so that the others could then point the finger at the absentee. And so, everybody that accesses this area was invited to be here. So, those four businesses were given specific notice to come to this review matter. So, Ms. Renee, demonstrate for us on the photos.
This is the Old Fannin Road Autoplex entrance. This is also the Autoplex. And then this goes to the Global Screen Printing and Mudbugs, I believe, in the back. And then these are kind of the view of the Farmer's Market area and the entrance to the south.
Which is a distinct difference in the two.
Let me ask this, who's here today representing the groups that we talked about? I know Mr. Cockrell's here up front, I see that. Mr. Webb, good to see you. Anyone else? I know I spoke to Mr. Cullen, the Mudbugs owner, on the same side, and he's out of town, but I've spoken to him a time or two on the telephone. I think the issue is, first thing I want to say is to Mr. Cockrell, just to address him just for a second. He's dealing with, working to keep this area clean. Weekly, on a weekly basis, he's out there with blowers and his crew out there trying to keep it out. The issue we've got is the gravel that's pushed in behind everything as cars come out working. Kyle, I know, has worked hard over the last year and a half or so to really keep this area as clean as he possibly can with sweepers and stuff like that. So, I appreciate what you do on that very side of it. The issue really, I think, comes between, right, hold it right there, Ms. Renee, if you don't mind, is the driveway right here, which keeps getting busted up, it takes us back to the back. The point, I think, of the day was just to get all the people together that we could, and obviously, we only have a few people here, but to get a game plan from here on on how to address the busted up asphalt slash road. And I guess that's, I don't even want to call it slag, but it's the rocks that go back toward the back, toward the Mudbugs area and the screen printing area. When I spoke to Matt, the owner of Mudbugs, his discussion was he's trying to get in touch with all the property owners in that same area to get a game plan to go forward on that same point. He owns the property in the back, and I guess the issue is, everybody's accessing it. The big problem, I think, that really tears it up, what Matt was telling me, is when 18-wheelers or larger trucks make that turn right there, it dives into that segment of the asphalt. So, the point of the whole issue is, I guess, is to figure out a game plan from this point forward on where we need to go to keep the gravel and stuff off the road. That's our main concern, is to keep the gravel off Old Fannin Road. That could cause us some safety issues on that side. So, suggestions, comments from this point, Jay?
Help.
Yeah, I mean, and that's really what we're doing. It's just kind of a brainstorm and discussion to, if we've got an idea. We wanted to get all the parties together, like Mr. Slay mentioned, to try to get an idea of where to go forward. And we don't want to speak for anybody else that's there. And I appreciate Mr. Webb, Mr. Cockrell showing up.
Mr. Webb, which business do you own?
Global Screen Printing.
Okay.
Well, I don't own the business, own the building.
Okay, I got you.
I've owned the business for about five or six years, and we've been there probably 12 years. But now, a lot of this started...
Come on, Mr. Webb, if you don't mind.
We've had a problem with this road, and we've resurfaced it several times, and we've... Gerald Webb, 144 Fountain Boulevard, Brandon, 39047. But I just got the letter yesterday because it was sent to my old address. But, yeah, we've tried to come up with every idea in the world to keep this, well, it really needs to be paid, first of all. The water comes directly straight down this hill. There's no drainage whatsoever. And when the construction started on the five lane, that's, that it really, you know, increased the problem here. Because you have these 18-wheelers that come in, I think they're bringing in cars, and I know food service trucks are coming in up the road. Now, we have UPS trucks that come in, but the real issue is not just the road itself, it's now the slope of the road. I'm not an engineer, I'm not a paving expert, but all I know is that needs to be either some good drainage put in with good pavement or concrete.
Yes, sir. And I think, Mr. Webb, the issue, I think it's all private property from that same point there that's pulling back down on here. So, the one thing I would just suggest is that if we could, if you might get in touch with Matt, the owner of Mudbugs and the backside, the auto property people right there. I know Mr. Cockrell's easy to work with on the same side, on the neighbor side of it. But try to come up with some kind of game plan to keep this out. I mean, and I don't know the route. I mean, I don't know the discussion side.
I would like to have it fixed completely, because that's a business back there. You want your customers to have a good road to go up. I drove up there yesterday, in fact. I forgot the letter and, and after the rain.
Sure.
And it was even worse yesterday.
I bet that was fun, yeah. Do it.
I surprised the Autoplex guy.
Yeah, and I thought the Autoplex guy would come. I don't know either, but I'm going to personally go by there tomorrow or Monday.
Yeah, I don't really know him. I've spoken to him a couple of times, but had a chance to speak.
Matt, I know, was...
But I know Matt very well.
I spoke to Matt the other day, and I know he's open to the discussion of the whole thing, wants to get a game plan to figure this out. We've just got to get some kind of game plan to keep it off of the road. That's kind of the main thing.
Well, you know, I agree. I'm at 100 percenters.
Who owns that property right there where the drive is?
My interpretation of it, I think Matt owns it. The Mudbugs property may own that strip to it.
Oh, really?
But it's the access to it that everybody uses, I think.
No, that I didn't know. We have a easement, obviously, for our business building there. And I was talking to my wife, because she really kind of run this business, ran this business. She's know more about it than I do, because she had to go to the doctor this morning. But I know we had, we've got an easement there, and there's some other buildings back there, some other businesses. Because I think we even at one point tried to get that, put a road, put a road through there, back there, because there's some other land back there that's very valuable. It's just sitting there because you can't get to it. But anyway.
That's the main thing, Mr. Webb. I think if we can, what we're trying to do is ramp up the conversation, wouldn't you agree, Jay?
Yeah, we just need some assistance, and, you know, there's nobody really to address. Mr. Cockrell's obviously taking care of his part. We don't have any one person to go to to help us. So, that's why we sent a letter to everyone, hoping we could get some collaboration.
Yeah, so...
Thank you.
If I may, just for the record, I want to be clear, is there anyone here from Old Fannin Autoplex? I didn't want to leave them out. Clearly, by my observation and based on what you've heard here, the Autoplex is obviously utilizing this access with large 18-wheel type traffic. And it looks to me like that may be, although I'm not 100% sure of this, but that may be one of the causes of the potholing there in the drive.
Well, I believe that, I'm almost thinking the tail of that car hauler is dragging when you're making that turn coming out.
Yes, sir.
Either way, Mr. Slay, I mean, you tell me what we need to do as far as just, and my point is just to offer encouragement to speak to you guys, to get on the same page, to see if we can kind of come up with a game plan on there.
And truthfully, Global Printing probably the least invasive on the road out of everybody, it sounds like. And he's the only one showed up.
Well, Kyle did, yeah. And again, I talked to Matt, he's just got a scheduling conflict, the owner of Mudbugs on the same side, and he's willing to work with the crew on the same side. But I think, Mr. Webb, it's really you and Matt and the Autoplex guy that, because Kyle's not really accessing this left side of it, I don't think. But that's where we just need to kind of have some discussion to see if we can remy up a plan for you. Because I know your customers would probably like it better just to slide back up in there, so...
Would all like it better.
All right.
All right, thank you, Mr. Webb. Thank you, Kyle, very much.
Again, this was really in the nature of a review. It wasn't designed to be for the board to take any specific action. And so, we will close that review matter. Let me make a suggestion that we revisit the issue of the Autoplex and their involvement, and perhaps some communication, not just from the Community Development Office, although that gets us way down the road most of the time. Maybe we can encourage them to be more involved in this process. I'll send them a letter and suggest...
And encourage them to work with Mr. Webb and Matt and all on the Mudbugs side, just to understand the, and if you would, maybe also copy them on the letter, just so they can see what's going on.
Yes, I would suggest that one action that we may want to consider is inviting the Autoplex to come and visit with us about rerouting their ingress egress for their vehicles.
Why don't we try the other method first?
That's going to be hard, real rough.
But either way, I think the main thing is we just need the Autoplex, along with everybody else, just to come together and get on the same page and work out a solution, whatever that's solution.
And if we can't do that, then we'll go there.
Okay. So, we'll give them an opportunity to voluntarily help us.
Thank you.
Okay. Understood.
All right.
Thank you all for coming today.
Anything else from the planning commission meeting? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Morrison, second, Mr. Gaines, to adjourn this. Next meeting will be held on November 1st, 2018. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Based on carries, we will now call to order the Board of Supervisors meeting for August 27th, September 27th, 2018. I don't see any public comments. Is that correct, Mr. Morrison? Anybody out there wish to make a public comment at this time? Yes, if you'll please come up and state your name and address, and please keep it to two to three minutes, please, sir.
How are you all this morning? I'm Charles Walker, 518 Terra Road. Y'all had sent me a letter, and I was spoken to Dwayne and Renee, you know, about, y'all declared, you know, declaring it was a public nuisance, and I was not able to make the last meeting.
We have not declared a public nuisance. I think we were waiting for you to come back to the meeting at that point in time, and you were not on the agenda this month. So, Dwayne will get back with you. You have, you're at the east end with the metal building, is that correct?
Yes, sir, I'm right on the corner.
Okay, all right. I've ridden by a couple of times. Probably, Dwayne and I will probably stop by and make a visit one day, maybe, and it's convenient, catch up with you. But I appreciate you coming and sitting through here for an hour and 10 minutes, but we'll be back in touch with you.
Right, well, I've spoken to Renee last month, and I apologize if I couldn't make the meeting.
That's fine.
But my girls go to school right down the street, and it was meet the teacher, so, you know, they come first.
Sure, absolutely.
But, you know, I would...
We'll be back in touch on that.
I did actually leave you, Mr. Morrison, I left you a voicemail a few weeks ago, you know, just to try to, you know, just have a starting discussion on this. But I'd love to, you know, Dwayne's got my number. You know, I'm not out there on a regular basis, and, you know, if I want to, I'd be happy to set up a time to meet with y'all.
Good deal. I appreciate you coming.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson? I think Boyd wants to say something, I think. Good morning, Mr. Robinson, how are you?
Good morning. Boyd, up to 900 North Wood Circle, Woodbridge subdivision, just briefly, just to see what the status was. We've been talking paving, and I know there's been delays, there's been a lot of growth out there the last few months. It was supposedly going to be done earlier this year, and then all the traffic...
Sure. Let me give you an update while we're at it.
The weather's changing, and so, there's people both ways. Some would rather wait, some would rather get it done, but just see.
Here's where we're at, I'll tell you. We pulled the line of credit that's set up for Woodbridge, and I think it's in the neighborhood of 400 and, I don't know, 400...
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
North of $4,000 or whatever it is. We've got AdCamp, our paving company, out there doing a, an estimate on everything to be sure it falls inside the scope of the money, and then we'll figure out where we go from there. Hopefully, we have that estimate come back. I know Mike, our road manager, has got AdCamp out there. They're tying down some projects, obviously, in the last month, but we should have that estimate back in the next week or so, and I'll be able to give you an update on time projects from that point right there.
Do we look to do it this year, or are we looking for next year when the weather breaks?
We can do it whenever you'd like. Basically, what happens is AdCamp goes out, checks everything, gets the pricing on everything, gives us back a bid on this is going to cost X amount of dollars. We want to be sure, obviously, it stays inside the line of credit number side of it. But so, we may be higher than that. We'll have to come back and get the report. AdCamp checks all the layering, I'm sure, of the roads before they come put their final surface down. So, before we launch them over there to it, I'll call you and say, "Hey, here we are, they're ready to go." Hopefully, we'll have that bid back in the next week. Mike, what do you think, next week to 10 days? And at that point, I'll let you know, "Hey, here we are, this is the month." You tell me if you want it now or wait till the summer.
All depends on weather, too.
And that's the board, that's not me. But the board did meet, and we've got a civil engineer who said, you know, the base coat that we've got out there has deteriorated, there's water going through.
And you've still got a few more homes that still got to go into that same side, so it's kind of your call. But what I want to be able to do is, once we get the bid that comes back from AdCamp on the cost of everything, I want you to come to me and say, "Hey," I'll give it to you, but I want you to tell me, "Go ahead and go." The issue is... and go, the, the issue is, once we put that down, you got more traffic in there, it's gonna be a mess, I don't want to waste your money, it, it's your money, and it's gonna go down, so.
We'll be the one that fixes it.
Well, yeah, after a little while.
No, after, it tears up.
Yeah, that's right, so.
Well, it is, and it, but now, part of three-pronged roads, then they're just, they put red sand and, and rock, and they paved over it from the, and that, that road's held up through all of this, and some of the other hasn't, but, you know.
Yeah, some do, some don't.
Once, once we get that number in the next 10 days, Mike, when you think, I'll get back with you, and you tell us where you want us to go from that point.
Let me be the board, not me, I'm just gonna kind of give the status.
I'll call you, let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, service, Rob.
Thank you, we appreciate it, anyone else for public comments? If not, we'll close it, Mr. Slade, you're up.
As a matter of, of, of making sure that there's no confusion on the point, um, AdCamp, uh, the conversation that Daniel was just having, uh, with Mr. Robinson, AdCamp is our six-month semi-annual supplier of asphalt, and so, what we are waiting on is, uh, an estimate of what would fall under our six-month semi-annual, uh, asphalt contract that's already in place, I just want to make sure that that was clear.
I make, I make Slade nervous when I start talking to you. Sorry about that.
I'm keeping my supervisor on straight and narrow there. Uh, my item is a consideration of a potential action to authorize payment by Rankin County in the amount of $4,500 to the Mississippi Department of Transportation for the design and construction of an appropriate sign that will be placed on State Highway 25 and Highway 43 that recognizes and commends Olympic athlete, friend Torez, we know her as Tori Bowie. Uh, this was authorized by the Mississippi Legislature in 2017, uh, during their legislative session, uh, and we were als, we are also asking if the board approves the expenditure of the funds to authorize the county administrator to remit that check to DOT. Um, uh, Steve, you may have to help me, but my recollection is that, uh, House Member Tom Miles has sort of, uh, been at the forefront of helping with the legislation, of course, Steve, you've been very active, uh, in making sure that the community was aware that, that this commendation, that this placard could be placed, uh, but we had to have authorization from the legislature so that DOT would be incentivized to place this sign, you, you've got a couple of options, that legislation was silent on the issue of who was responsible for the cost of the sign, we got authority to put it there, and DOT has to oversee all of it, the placement of it, the style of it, uh, the, the, uh, minimum footage of it, all of that has to go through DOT from an approval standpoint, so the county could, we could create the sign, but we would still have to turn it over, everything, turn over to DOT for ultimate approval before it's placed, DOT has come back and said, we're happy to get the sign constructed, created, it'll fit all of our parameters, we'll get it installed, the cost to the county is $4,500, and so, that's what you're being asked to do, so we can get that sign up, also want to point out, uh, and Steve, you can follow up with any details on this, but my recollection is that, right after Tori won one of her medals, I've lost track of which, she won some mini, I, I don't remember exactly what it was, but she was being interviewed on the television, and she said, uh, my dream has always been that as I drive back to my home community, there would be a sign that recognized me winning an Olympic medal, and so, this is an opportunity to carry out what she indicated there, very humbly, what she indicated there at the time that she won the medal, uh, so this is our first opportunity to act on that.
She, I think in her heart was more, she wanted Sand Hill Piska to be recognized.
That's right.
And her name could go on it, too, uh, but, when we started this two years ago, two and a half years ago, uh, we went through a lot of different hoops, and Tom Miles helped us get it to legislate, to the part that, uh, where they're gonna build the sign and put it up, all that, however, at the same time, they took a stance, they being our House of Representatives, that any of these local government, uh, sign request would, uh, the bill would be in, paid for by the person or government requesting, uh, before that, I think MDOT or whoever would, some of them they would charge, and some they wouldn't, but Tom has assured me that they know more, if you want the sign up, you pay for it, uh, and I think it's a very reasonable amount of money, this is two large signs on each, one on each side of the highway, uh, I, I don't think they're gouging us, I think it's fair.
Who maintains, who will do the maintenance?
That's gonna be a DOT maintenance.
It's their right, or they will.
Yes, sir.
It, it'll be, it's their sign in their right.
Okay, what, okay.
And, Steve, I, I wanted to make sure that we didn't leave anybody else out, I know Tom was very active in it, uh, if, maybe I should just say it this way, if there are any other local legislators who were involved in this process, we definitely want to recognize them, too.
All of those from Rankin County that represent parts of Rankin County were for it, so, that, that way we don't leave anybody.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Second.
Good.
Motion, second.
Motion, Mr. Gaines, second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed like sign, motion carries, thank you, Mr. Slade. Ms. Oster, show your assurance appears.
Thank you, the first item I have this morning is authority to amend the FY18 budget as of September 31th to reflect the actual receipts and expenditures of the fiscal year.
Motion by Mr. Cross, any, any, sir, second, second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed like sign, motion carries, B, please, ma'am.
Next item is authority to transfer from General County Fund to the Blue Cross Blue Shield Fund, an amount sufficient to cover September claims incurred but not yet paid, I won't know until after the close of September if there is any money to be transferred, and there may not be this year.
Most approved.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed like sign, motion carries, C, please, ma'am.
Approval of claims document in the amount of $2,44,025.63.
Motion, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed like sign, motion carries, next, please.
Authority to enter into a Microsoft Enterprise Enrollment Agreement for the renewing, uh, maintenance and licensing, and authority to issue a purchase order, and if you have any questions, Marcus is here, if you have any questions about that.
Most approved.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed like sign, motion carries, next, Ms. Oster.
Approval of additional support to Cato Volunteer Fire Department in the amount of $30,962 for the purchase of an air cascade system, authority to issue that check.
I make a motion to approve.
Yeah, I, I'll second. I don't thi, I don't think so, hey, just, do we normally, I mean, tell me about that, I mean, you sent me something, I can't remember.
They made a request, the, Cato Fire made a request back the beginning or at the end of FY17, either for doing renovation work or awarding a cascade system, I said I would not do both, y'all pick one, they decided to go the renovation route, and then they never followed through, and I got a request to do next FY, I told them, we will, I, we just couldn't do it next FY, then Brett says, well, it is Florence, I have money in the, the fund to, to pay, because I think Cleary did not exercise her option, and Brett didn't have a problem with it, so I agreed to, to allow, try to, try to get them this cascade system before they.
Cleary didn't exercise the option to get one.
No, there was some.
Clearly, whoever the fire department was.
There was a fire department in there that had some money in there for addition to a building or something that did not happen, so the money remained in the budget, it was sufficient.
And the only thing I'd like to just add to it is just, uh, reminder to the departments that are down there, they got another cascade system down there to fill bottles, I mean, just open the, ticket up to other departments to, uh, to share on bottle film.
They have these, those fire stations, haven't they?
The money that was in there, it might have had.
Well, it's, it's fixing to be done.
Well, it, I don't know that that was put on for the upcoming year's budget or not, I'd have to look back and review the papers that Brett gave to me, but it's too late within this year to give them anything, this is our last chance, and the email I had on it was that it had not been done, that money would not be, uh, given to Cleary this year, this fiscal year.
Okay, just ignore that one. Okay, well, it's a different subject, but then, how would we handle that, because we're fixing, we, I've been working, I finally got the land donated, and so, it's basically sitting there.
Maybe they didn't need to buy it, maybe they said they have to buy it, they don't need that, that 60.
Well, they, I don't see where, well, I don't know if they've figured in on the purchases and property, I think we thought we could probably get some, but it's been a long drawn out process, but anyway, I guess I'm.
Well, during FY19, if it's requested and the funds are available, we can either amend the budget, or it might fall within the budget.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we're doing the final leg of securing the property, yeah, okay.
Motion by myself, second, Mr. Cross, any further discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed like sign, motion carries, thank you, uh, next, Ms. Oster.
The next item is discussion of a potential action on the adoption of a drug and alcohol policy, I brought this to y'all a while ago, I believe I had even sent y'all an email, it's a small policy, our workers' compensation asks that we have a separate drug and alcohol policy and a safety policy in order to be, uh, eligible for certain discounts that we can get, and it has to be in place by the end of the fiscal year, the safety polis, policy is one that we've had for many a year, I couldn't even tell you its inception, this is just basically was cleaned up, the drug and alcohol policy, most of it came out of our existing personnel policy, there were a few state things added, I sent this to Mickey Watkins, our Blue Cross representative, and he sent it to his, um, attorneys that he has available for review, they're out of state, they had some questions, they sent their feedback back to us, Sherry and I looked over it, we took out some language they said was not necessary, we included some other things, and this is, um, what I present to y'all today, um, so that we can get our discounts.
At least can pull you, maybe.
Most approved.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed like sign, motion carries, next, Ms. Oster.
Okay, and there was no charge from, for Mickey, for them to review this, there was no charge for that, uh, the next one is discussion of a potential action on the adoption of the safety policy.
Do we have anybody to review that?
No, sir, we did not, it is.
What is, safety policy?
Right, it's one that, like I said, has been in place for years, it was just extremely old and out of date, and we just sort of cleaned it up.
Most approved.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed like sign, motion carries, next, Ms. Oster.
Uh, approval of the request of Florence ban boosters for the FY18 recreational funds in the amount of, and that amount on there is incorrect, it should be $1,425, that's authorized in House Bill 1699, and these funds will be purchased, uh, purchase of a Yamaha, uh, workstation to be used at halftime shows, and authority to issue that check.
I make motion approved.
Motion for Mr. Morrison, second, Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed like sign, motion carries, aye, please, ma'am.
This is end of the year, um, items, approval of the following inventory changes, and remove items from county inventory, and approve, approve the list of the unmarked vehicles for the sheriff's department, and record as a permanent part of the minutes, and there is an attachment to what's been executed.
Most approved.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, to approve, second, Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor say aye, all opposed like sign, motion carries, J, please, ma'am.
Approval of the FY18 year-end inventory and annual disposition of assets report.
Most approved.
Motion, Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Cross, anybody have anything to say? All in favor say aye, all opposed like sign, motion carries, K, please, ma'am.
Review, review of the agendas for October 1st, is there any questions?
Do we not take any action on our, you know, these, uh, employees that go get classes, and they get raises from that class, I mean, are we still paying the tuition?
Yes, if it's requested, we will, from any of the departments, I believe that, um, Judy has some on for Monday.
I saw that.
Any other thoughts on the agendas, y'all all good? Think we're all good, Ms. Oster? Uh, let's see, I think that, anything else under Ms. Oster that y'all need to discuss before we leave on to additional business? Mr. Slade, you want to introduce our guest?
Absolutely, glad to. At this time, uh, we've got our friends from Wagner Engineering, they're under contract with the county to provide us with what we are calling a drainage inventory, uh, this is a, uh, in the nature of a presentation, help you guys know where we have gotten to in the point, in, in the process, uh, and we are going to need some additional information from the board to conclude the process of the actual inventory and file report, and so, Zofia Damish and Jennifer Ziegler with Wagner are here to help us with that presentation, I've had occasion to meet with both Zofia and Jennifer on a number of occasions to go through this process, I appreciate very much their diligence and their effort, I know that they've had opportunities to visit with you guys individually, and so, this will be an opportunity for them to meet and to, uh, to share with you sort of where we have gotten to collectively, uh, and hopefully get some feedback from you as well, so, without further ado, Zofia, I'm gonna turn it over to you, thank you.
Thank you, Craig, I really appreciate it, it's a pleasure being with the board this morning, and we've kind of really been looking forward, uh, to this briefing, and while the slide presentation is really loading, just wanted to give you a little bit of background, I think, uh, this is a very monumental, uh, type of task that the county has taken on, in my opinion, uh, I've been a watershed planner for most of my career, and being a watershed planner is a title that's really not that familiar to most folks in the state of Mississippi, uh, a lot of municipalities, a lot of counties across our nation are really starting to look at watershed planning, uh, in a more serious, uh, approach, uh, it's an approach that really looks not just at the micro level, to the different types of issues that we have, uh, most counties, municipalities, uh, have some really, uh, complicated issues that deal with drainage, and one of the best approaches to really deal with those types of issues, uh, because it crosses multiple boundaries, it definitely deals with a lot of issues that relate to stormwater, so there's a lot of collaboration that needs to occur when it comes to those types of issues, and watershed planning and watershed approaches are really the most efficient way, in our opinion, uh, to deal with those types of complicated issues.
Thank you.
So, just to refresh the board's memory, um, we were very fortunate to be part of the effort that the county is undertaking to enact a very proactive approach to stormwater management, the project that we have with you, and we're collaborating with you on, is really to develop a comprehensive drainage master plan, and being a watershed planner, in my opinion, I really think a more appropriate title to that is really a proactive watershed-based stormwater management program, and that's really what I think of this. Uh, we're gonna have an outline for our briefing, and we want this to be as interactive as possible, we would depreciate any feedback at any time from everybody on this, uh, to help out with this effort, and to guide everybody through the process, we do have packets for everybody, some of the slides, I apologize already, there's a couple of them in there that might be a little blurry and everything, so feel free to kind of follow on, along, and there's also a detailed copy of the actual presentation itself in your, in the individual packets, uh, the outline we're going to use is basically, we figured it would be a great idea to start out and provide a quick overview of what the scope of work is, that we started back in December, and then transition and explain why we're using a watershed approach to accomplish that scope of work, and then provide you a detailed progress report, and discuss, uh, your opinions, your ideas, any comments that you might not have on the remaining tasks that we still have in that contract, then give you a general idea of what the final product is going to look like. So, the scope of work really was comprised of three phases, and phase one basically started out with creating a program inventory, because in essence, the county is really taking a proactive approach here to establish a program, so we started out with a program inventory with data collection, and conducting what we call a county-wide situational needs assessment, so, phase one has been completed, and I think there's been a preliminary report that's shared with most of you on that. Phase two really involved the development of an implementation program, and that particular phase was comprised of six, uh, tasks, and culminates in the preparation of a final document, which is a final program, uh, for the county. Uh, in that phase, one of the critical items is really identifying all of the issues, countywide, characterizing them, and then at the same time, developing a prioritization process for all the issues, a lot of the challenging issues that the county has, then we evaluated existing ordinances and policies, we looked at zoning, we looked at, uh, different policies that you have, we looked at, uh, every little, uh, data that really relates to stormwater, we collected all that data, made sure all of that information is current, and we organized it, we analyzed it, and then, the other task really involved also, uh, the identification of proposed maintenance. And then the other task really involved also the identification of proposed maintenance schedule. We looked at all of the problem issues. We looked at those sites. We visited them, characterized them, and we developed some types of solutions for those particular sites. If we knew what the problem was, and if we didn't know what the problem is, then we would recommend alternative actions that are needed in order to determine what that problem is. The remaining, the last three tasks, tasks five, six, and seven, these are the items that we're currently working on, and we really need some feedback from the board to kind of help complete those tasks. Critical delivery point here is really item six. Item six really references the development of a very detailed five-year action plan that we're going to recommend for the board. The third phase of the scope of work really involved providing an ongoing program support services, and that's really looking at identifying potential funding options to assist the county in its efforts. This is a very important topic. There's a lot of different funding options on the federal, state, local levels. There are different scenarios. We would like this particular phase to really help, help the county position itself in a way to where they can secure some of those funding needs. So, if you look really at the scope of work when we started with this back in December, it has a flow to it. And the flow to it really starts out with data analysis and collection and analysis. It feeds into characterization and quantification. In other words, why are we collecting all of that data? We're collecting it so that we were able to characterize it and quantify some of the issues. Once we quantify the issues and characterize them, we moved into prioritization and targeting. So, we developed prioritization criteria. So, every one of those boxes has specific procedures that are documented, and it has a flow. In other words, it culminates in the development of a plan and an implementation. So, it has a flow that is consistent with a watershed approach. You've probably heard me say the word watersheds. Watersheds maybe about 20 times so far. So, really wanted to throw in another slide. And what is a watershed? I mean, let's just go back to the basics for just one minute here. So, what are we talking about when we say a watershed? Everybody had, might have their own vision and their own idea of a watershed is. And to me, a watershed is basically a defined land area that's hydrologically and geographically defined. And basically, whatever water that falls within that area drains into a common point. A lot of times, that common point is a stream or a lake, some kind of a water body. The streams are structured in a way to where you would have a first order, if it's like a small little tributary in the upper reaches, or with, it merges with a second tributary, it becomes a second order and a third order and so forth. Every watershed has its own characteristics. You know, some watersheds have different climate, they have different topography, different slope, different sizes, and so on. Most importantly, if you look from one watershed to the other, it might have a different, completely different flood zone characteristics, and they have a different land use characteristics. So, it's very important to understand your own watershed and how it's characterized as a whole. On the national and actually international level, a lot of the watersheds are actually delineated by the USGS. So, when we start looking at a specific watershed, what are we talking about? What size are we talking about? If we're dealing with stormwater, what's the proper sized watershed? So, if you look at this table right here, you start looking at different levels. So, there, right now, actually, more than six, there are seven levels. So, when you're talking about hydrologic unit codes, that's the technical term for There are about six levels. So, at the level that we're talking about here, that we decided to choose for Rankin County, is a 12-digit hydrologic unit code. Those codes or those types of watersheds are usually averaging size. There is a range between 10,000 to 40,000 acres. Now, for Rankin County, I do know that some of y'all's watersheds actually fall under the 10,000 acre mark. So, that's really what a watershed is. But then, what is a watershed approach? And why did we choose a watershed approach? Why are a lot of folks are really starting to look at this? Now, one thing I forgot to point out for the county, for the board here today, is that I call this a proactive approach because this is only the second project of this kind in the state of Mississippi. There's only one other one, just like it. Watershed-based approach basically, and the reason we want to rely on that in dealing with drainage and stormwater issues is because it's hydrologically defined. You know, I mean, water doesn't really know, doesn't understand political boundaries. So, at the same time, it's geographically focused. It includes stressors. And what I mean by stressors is that, okay, you look at a watershed, watershed could be characterized in so many different ways, but the most important characterization in a watershed is really the land use. So, you may have a watershed that's maybe 40% ag. So, the different land use categories, let's for example, say agriculture. Well, agriculture, improper agricultural practices could lead to erosion, sedimentation, nutrient enrichments. These are all water quality and water quantity related issues. Take forestry or hydrologic modifications, alterations of this flood zone, all of those could lead to erosion, sedimentation. Another category, take urban stormwater, which is something on the upper list as you get further downstream in the watershed. Urban stormwater, improper application of urban stormwater management can lead to erosion, sedimentation, flooding, streambank instabilities, all kinds of issues. So, it's very important to understand the land use and how to characterize a watershed from a stressor standpoint, too. The watershed approach also involves like stakeholders, involves, you have to be very collaborative, you have to work with on team, you've got to look at public, federal, state, and local communities, and it's also strategically defines and target priority issues. Because the problems are so big, a lot of folks really focus more on the site specific at the micro level. The watershed approach kind of gives you an idea that I need to really prioritize all of my issues because my issues are too many, and I don't have the resources to really tackle all of those issues. Most important to me, why a watershed approach is because it facilitates really the establishment of sustainable structural, non-structural solutions. It looks at policies and tries to realign all different policies at the county and city level to be more conducive to actual and effective type of management. So, really, it's more like a cyclical phase process is what we're talking about. It starts out, it's like a loop. It really facilitates the ongoing development, implementation of what we call shared priorities. It also realigns existing policies and procedures, and it provides transparency to stakeholders. This is something very, very important to everyone. It incorporates proactive and active, micro and macro level type of solutions to the problems. A lot of times, you have some site-specific issues, and the most obvious solution to those is going to be a combination of different things. The solution to the problem, or 80% of the problem, might be a few miles away, not necessarily at that one location. Also facilitates the establishment of shared priorities. I mean, I'm going to stress this heavily because to me, that's a very, very important point, getting everybody on the same page. Okay, so, that's really my thing on watershed planning, and I just want to make sure the board fully understands the approach. That's why I spent so much time on that. So, moving forward, really, one of the initial steps and the first steps that we needed to do is how to delineate the county into 12-digit hydrologic unit codes. So, we did that. And in doing so, we've pretty much realized that the county has 42 12-digit hogs throughout the county. So, there's 42 watersheds, and there's about 2,500 stream miles that exist inside the county. So, the county is not really water poor here. There's a lot of water, there's a lot of streams in Rankin County. Also, we characterize it from a standpoint where we've realized that there's about the drainage pattern for those watersheds. There's about 16 that flow below the reservoir into the Pearl. None of those watersheds go into the, actually, the reservoir itself, and about three that flow upward north of the reservoir. The remaining ones flow into the Strong River or further down into the Pearl. So, during phase one, this is, we're getting into actually the part here that where we're going to talk about the actual specifics as far as what was done, give you a progress report on the actual tasks that were, that were performed. So, on the data collection part, what that really entailed is creating a really detailed inventory of all the stormwater planning data that the county had. So, we had to go and meet with everybody. We went after the cities, municipalities. We gathered the latest information that you have on everything that relates to flood maps, talks about all your GIS data. So, we compiled a detailed inventory. And then we conducted a situational needs assessment. That assessment basically was so detailed, and some of the things that we really asked for is what is the location and what's the detailed description of the problem? And we didn't get that just from one person. We got that information from multiple people by reference. So, if we talked to someone, they tells us there's a problem there, he says, "Go talk to so-and-so," we go talk to so-and-so, he says, "Go talk to so-and-so." So, we've done that to gain as much knowledge about every specific site in the county. We've got the name and phone numbers, contact information. We try to gain an understanding of how long the problem really existed at that site and what's the history on it. And then, task number three, we've done a field investigation and site analysis. So, we went out there and did our own engineering inspections on every single site, documented it with pictures, photo documentation. We drove around the site area to document the drainage patterns. We tried to gain a general understanding of what are the feasible solutions based on the data that we have. What are the feasible solutions for those sites? Most importantly, there was task four. Task four really involved the, conducting a county-wide flood zone encroachment analysis. To me, that's a very, very, a big, important task, and it was an eye-opener for us, and we'll share the data with you here shortly. So, what are the results? The results of the analysis that we've done and all the data that we gathered, basically, our field investigation and site analysis revealed that there's 60 total sites, problem sites, across the county, countywide. City limits, outside the city limits, there's about 60 sites. Those sites actually existed in 17 watersheds. Out of the 42 watersheds that are in the county, 17 of them had some problem issues or drainage issues. So, that was a distribution by watershed. Here's a distribution here by district. So, out of those 60 sites, this is the actual distribution that we have on. Another more interesting distribution of the problem sites, this is a distribution, and if this slide is not clear, I apologize, but there should be a copy of it in the packet there. This is a distribution of sites inside city limits versus outside the city limits. During phase two, here, I'm going to really turn it over. Phase two really deals with the development and implementation, talks about the ranking process and how we prioritize those 60 sites and what we had to do in order to establish a detailed process, a scientific approach to prioritization. And for that, I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer to go over the details.
Thanks. Good morning, guys. So, phase two was about the development of the implementation of the program, and we actually had six distinct tasks in order to do that. We've completed three of those tasks, and we're working to complete the other three, and that's really where we're coming to you guys to ask for some more feedback, and I'll get into that in just a minute after I go over the first three that we've, we've kind of tackled already. So, the first one was to develop the program priorities. When we did that, we met with each of you individually. We also met with Mike, the county road manager, you know, Craig, and we met with individuals from the different cities who had problem sites in there. And we tried to get some more information about each individual site so that we could understand from the people who deal with these sites day in and day out, what the, what the problems were. And after we gathered data, we created a preliminary hazard ranking that tells us about the hazards associated with each site, which is a little bit different from where it falls on the priority list. We'll cover that in a second. After that, we, we had meetings to get some feedback from you guys. So, we took the data she gave us, we put it through a scientific process, and then we, we went back to you guys and we've discussed that. Then we moved on to the identification of proposed improvements. When we did this, we took all that data, we took all the feedback, and we looked and we characterized each of the sites into a characterization matrix. We conducted any additional site analysis that needed to be done, so sometimes we had to go back to the site to get some more information. Then we developed structural and non-structural solutions to the sites that we could. There were some sites that we were like, we kind of know what the problem is, and we kind of know what the solution is, but we still need more information. So, we've, we've recommended some solutions to get around that, and then we've developed conceptual opinions of probable costs and something that I think that all of you guys were very interested in was we've, we're working on developing specific site summary sheets. So, there's a one pager for each individual site that tells you where it's located, what its problems are, what it's, what it's, what we think the conceptual OPC is going to be and things like that. So, the preliminary hazard ranking criteria, you guys probably remember this when we came in. We came in, we had a series of questions that we asked you. So, we wanted to be able to characterize each site as a high, medium, or low priority for hazards, specifically what hazards do these sites pose to your constituents and to the people that use this area. So, we asked you, is it an imminent threat? If we do a project, will it, will it result in either less property damage? Will it improve transportation in the city? Or are there other costs that if we reduce flooding in this area, that will be beneficial if you do a project? We also asked an estimation of how many businesses or residences would be beneficially impacted if a project were to occur at each individual site. We talked about the project lifestyle, lifecycle costs. So, basically, is, what's the cost now versus if you put it off into the future? Because that's really important when you're talking about how you're going to prioritize your sites. And then we looked at if the project would enhance property values. That's always something that's really important to you guys and to your constituents as well. And finally, we asked about the type of complaints the county has received. That's also something that when we met with the different cities, when we talked about the sites in the cities, we asked the city representatives as well, what type of complaints have you guys received? Because sometimes people will complain to the city instead of the county about some of those things. So, after we did all that, we moved into priorities. So, we looked at what sites are hazards, but just because it is a medium hazard doesn't mean that it's necessarily in the medium ranking for our priority, right? So, there are some sites that affect more people that are more beneficial in the long run to do now as opposed to later. So, we conducted some meetings about that. We actually came up with 20 priority sites, high priority sites across the county, 20 out of the 60, so that's a third. And when we looked at the flood zones, roughly 12 of those are actually located in the flood zone. Zofia's going to go over some more about the flood zone and flood plan encroachment later, but it's important to note that over half of your priority sites are located in the flood zone. And the graphic on the right side of your screen actually shows the individual sites, where they're located in the watershed. You should have in your packet that handout. You should also have that same handout that instead of watersheds, it delineates it by supervisor districts, just in case you were interested in that. The red sites are the high, the high priority, the orange or the yellow sites are the medium priority, and the, the green sites are the lower priority. So, after we moved, after we finished all that, we, we used all the data that we collected to kind of characterize the site. So, after we visited the site, after we identified the potential solutions, which we worked with you guys, and we also worked with Mike on some of those solutions, we developed opinion, conceptual opinions of probable costs and the, the site sheets that I talked about. And then we created this project characterization matrix. All of the data that we collected, that's a, that's a lot of data, and you have a lot of sites. And so, we tried to narrow it down to a project, project characterization matrix in order to make it easier to see. We haven't finished that completely to date, so you don't have a copy of that. We haven't finished that completely to date, so you don't have a copy of that.
I don't see those anywhere.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You don't you don't have a copy of that because we're not completely finished with that. We're trying to finish up some conceptual OPCs before we put that in and show it to you guys. But basically, what we're trying to do is we're trying to characterize each site by talking about what type of project it is, what type of timeline is it going to take in order to take the the solution and actually get it into the ground? Potential funding sources, just a lot of options there. What permits are required in order to actually get this through? I'm sure that you guys know that sometimes a project can be rolling great, and then you'll just hit a stop with permitting. So we're trying to anticipate what permits you guys need in order to get these projects done so that there's not there's not that that stop on the work. Some of these projects are actually either getting ready for construction currently or they're in construction. So the characterization matrix will also show where the projects are in 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 the pipeline. Is it in the initial phases? Has permitting been done? Has land acquisition been done? Is it ready for construction? Is it in construction? Those those things are really important. Some of the sites, like I mentioned earlier, some of the sites, we know that there's a problem. We know the problem is generally, there's just too much water. And we have ideas for solutions, but the problem is, we're not exactly sure the best place to put that solution from an engineering standpoint. So those sites require a little bit more in-depth study and analysis. And if that's the case on a site, then we are indicating it on the matrix. And then finally, we also talk about the conceptual opinions of probable costs so that you guys know how much it's going to look, each of these sites is going to take from our expert engineering judgment. After we did all that, we also, one of the things that we looked at was your your existing ordinances and your policies. And this actually is in a handout. You're not going to be able to see it very well. But the next slide shows the the top are the model ordinance components. So we looked at national and state and local model ordinances for for stormwater. And then we compared them against the four existing ordinances that Rankin County has that deal with stormwater, which are the development ordinances, the zoning ordinances, the stormwater ordinance, and the flood damage prevention ordinance. And what we did was we compared your ordinances to model ordinances and said, okay, do you guys have these components? So at the top of this, at the top right here, you can see these are components. And for every box where there's a check, that means that your ordinance does actually have some component of the model ordinance in there. And then we made recommendations. We're in the process of making recommendations for some of your ordinances. So sometimes your ordinance was great. It was as strong or stronger than the model ordinance. If that's the case, nothing needs to be done. It's fantastic. In some cases, some things need to be updated. For instance, the flood damage prevention ordinance, model ordinances define new construction differently than you guys do in your ordinance. And so there's a discrepancy that needs to be investigated a little bit more detailed to see if you guys want to strengthen that language or not. So we've we've made some recommendations for actually each of the four ordinances that you guys have that deal with stormwater. And so that is where we are at currently, what we've what we've accomplished. And we're moving into, I'm going to back up a couple of slides. We're moving into the last three tasks in this phase. And those are the identification of proposed maintenance schedule, which will be based upon your five-year action plan, the evaluation of feasible resource strategies, and then the implementation program, which includes the short-term, five-year priority action plan, which we've done a lot of this data gathering for. So with that, if you guys don't have any immediate questions, I'm going to turn it back over to Zoe, who's going to talk about something that he touched on before, which is the floodplain encroachment analysis that we conducted for you guys.
Thank you. So one of the most important items, in my opinion, or tasks under the scope of work was really the floodplain encroachment. And this is an analysis that we've done. But before we get into the analysis, I think it'll be a great idea to kind of get a general sense of what is an encroachment. So when we talk about an encroachment, really, we're looking at every every single stream out there is going to have a its own defined normal flow width. So that would be the actual stream itself. And then beyond that, it's going to have what we call a floodplain. So the further you go away from the stream, there's a defined floodplain for that. So an encroachment basically is, the way we termed it in here, we looked at the 100-year flood zone. So when we did our analysis, we looked at, okay, do you have any development, any impervious surfaces inside that actual flood zone? And I just wanted to make that clear. So a lot of times that you see ordinances in different places, we're actually, they actually talk about riparian zones. You know, some folks want a buffer zone established. And this is really good, but sometimes we'd look at it and say, well, I'm fully developed. What are you talking about? How can I do a buffer zone? So that's where you get into retrofitting the the urban landscape with what we call best management practices. So there might be some opportunities out there to really expand and get out of the flood zone. Sometimes you have repetitive loss issues that are chronic. So that we look at those and say, okay, well, I need to really, the problem is not going to go away. Problem is not going to go away unless I really look at some really creative out-of-the-box solutions to where I need to do, get into regional detention practices, some macro-level BMPs at the watershed scale. Some science now is indicating if you provide detention in the 12-digit hook in the upper reaches, the upper one-third or something like that. So that's out-of-the-box, regional type of solutions that will have a positive impact as we transition downstream to our problem areas. So that's really what we mean by an encroachment. So when we did the encroachment analysis in there, one of the things that this table shows, like Jennifer mentioned, more than half of the problem sites were actually inside the flood zone. And actually, to be exact, we identified 35 out of the 60 sites to be inside the flood zone area. This table ranks, pretty much shows the watershed. And let me back up just a little bit. If you look at that first column, if this is not clear to you, you could look at your handout because this is also included. That watershed code is really the last three digits of the actual 12-digit hook. So if we start looking at the watersheds and list them, these are these are the 17 watersheds where we had problem sites. You will, we listed them based on the one that has the highest number of problem sites to the one that has the lowest. If you look at the fourth column, the fourth column indicates how many of those problem sites were actually in the flood zone itself. Then we looked at the most recent coverage that you have for your zoning. And then we analyzed all your zoning data, and we realized that, for example, hypothetically, just pick any of those watersheds, let's pick the first one. We found that the Lower Richland Creek, for example, has a 5%. It has a 5%, currently is developed inside that flood zone. Well, then we said, okay, well, how much is actually available for future development? Well, the total available is 35%, but 5% of it is already developed. So we have 30% that currently is available for development inside the flood zone. So I mean, doesn't take a lot of math there. I mean, if you do a full build-out in the future, let's say we turn or we develop that remaining 30%, if at 5%, we have four sites, I mean, you could pretty much do the math yourself and figure out, you know, where that's going to lead in the future. So this was a very big eye-opener for us. And really, the message I'm trying to drive here is that the county really needs to take a serious look at revising its zoning, especially in the flood zone. And that's going to be one of the recommendations. This particular slide here really demonstrates, it's a graphical representation of that table. And the reason I threw that in there, the dark bar there and and the green one, the green one is the total number of problem sites. The darker one is the total number that's inside the flood zone. So you could see there's a relationship between the two, too. So if you look at the top five or six, you realize there is also a relationship. So the reason I'm putting that up there is that this is to demonstrate that it's a compounding effect. So it's not just an immediate effect on that one side. It could tie into another site, too. Where we are today, like Jennifer mentioned, we're about 90-something percent. We asked that question. We're over 90% complete on doing the opinions of probable costs. The reason it's taken us a while is because of the complexity of some of those sites. A lot of them, we don't have a lot of detailed information as to figure out what is it that really needs to be done at those sites so we could cost it properly. We get to this point right now, this is where we really need a lot of feedback from the board, is what do we do for the next five years? And this is part of the schedule. What kind of action plan? Where do we want to be five years from now? What what are we going to do and how we're going to address our short-term priorities? So this is this is basically a short-term, five-year action plan. So we're proposing something for the county right here. And again, like I mentioned, this was done before somewhere else. But the dynamics are different. You go from one county to the next, it's just completely different. The the environment is different, the resources are different. That's the key, key point there, you know? So every county has its own unique resources or its own limitations on resources. So what we're proposing to do here, and this is really not a complicated chart. I'm not a big fan of a lot of words, a lot of text, a lot of things. I like to summarize things on one or two pages. So what we try to do here is to have the entire five-year action plan on one page. Now, the final document will have a lot of descriptions, a lot of words, a lot of things. But this could be carried out on your cell phone, you could look at it. The the purpose of this is really to have a snapshot of everything that's going on for the entire five years. Not by project, by activity, but also by total cost. So we look at this as being a living document that not just county officials, city officials, anybody could look at and say, okay, well, project number so-and-so, project number 1.05, it's in the pipeline. Where is it? Well, it's supposed to be during this five-year period. If you look at this chart, it's laid out by year and every year by quarter. So and and it's there's a color coding. One of the first things I would recommend is to look at the key at the bottom. These are the different phases of a project or an activity. If we were to do a project in there, it is color-coded on the planning stage. If it needs a hydrologic study or or any kind of study, that's the gray color. Get into engineering, preliminary engineering, final engineering, design. Does it need permitting? So it's characterized not just by type, but also period. So we would say, we need planning. Well, how long will planning take for one of those 60 sites? So we put in some effort in characterizing the period and the time necessary for every one of these phases. Then it's charted out over five years. You're going to find out that you may have projects that may exceed eight years. You may find out that even if you had the funds, you may have projects that'll take five years to complete. So a lot of times, we always focus on resources, resources. Sometimes you have the resource and say, what are we going to do now? If permitting is going to take two years? That's why I encourage, you know, the the idea here is really to plan ahead and say, okay, well, if I want to initiate this massive project at this point, and it needs two years of permitting, one year of planning, and it may need land acquisition, oh, boy, land acquisitions. Got to deal with so many different agencies, appraisers, or, you know, it takes, it's going to drag on, drag on, just permitting and land acquisitions. So that's why it's so important to characterize all of those projects and put a timeline on. If you want to do something for one of them, assume you have the fund. How long will it take? What do I have to go through? When do I need to initiate action on it? And that's why this five-year action plan is really, really important. So what we're proposing for the county here is really, if you look at the first column, we have what's called program establishment. Now, somewhere else in some other places where they have the resources and they have a lot of their programs realigned in a way that's conducive to project implementation, especially especially certain projects, and you have the resources, you have the money upfront, you could immediately transition into, okay, these are my top priorities. I want to tackle 10 projects in the next five years, and I'm going to have a little contingency for emergencies and so on, and I'm going to lay it out this way. This is my plan. Every project's going to cost this much, and the total is going to be that much for five years. It helps you in the planning stage from a budgeting standpoint in the future and also for leveraging resources and going to some of the federal agencies to help some matching or leveraging funds for your projects. So what we're proposing here is that for the county in our five, in the five-year action plan is to spend at least, and this all, this is a working document, like I said. So what we're proposing is program establishment where we would look at evaluating and propose some sustainable funding revenues or mechanisms, and then look at and evaluating and proposing new and revised ordinances and zoning requirements, realigning all of those policies, zoning ordinances, everything, and and spend maybe a year on that, and then implement the second year. So realign all your programs and continue to work on pretty much a method or way to really have a program with some level of sustainable funds. You know, whether there's funding from a federal revenue stream or state or local. So in other words, BFA, and then establish a funding level mechanism. And of course, the report is going to have more detail as far as to how and types of details. So after two years, hopefully, we anticipate that once these things are done, you would anticipate an injection of new funds and new revenues. And then the idea is that hopefully, if things go well, that's why the color coding is planning for the first year under program establishment and then transitions into implementation code. We don't know what that time period is. Actually, you guys have a much better sense as as far as how long it will take. So we transition into where we have some substantial type of funding revenue sources established to fund the program. And then we hopefully see some kind of new project injections in there. That's where you would stagger those projects. In other words, you could have those monster projects initiated, put them in the pipeline to where you know, with that phase, I don't need to fund the whole project, but at least I'm going to get the ball rolling. Let's say, you know, one project may require a watershed plan. Okay, well, that watershed plan, there's no, we're not talking about implementing. At least let's spend a little bit of money on it so that we get the ball rolling on it so we'll know, we don't have to fully fund it upfront. Let's fund it incrementally so we can fund a multiple incremental projects in there in the process. While that's going on, the first two years, what we're proposing to do is that we're not going to wait. I mean, it's not going to say, well, that's, we're not going to do anything. We're not going to address our issues. Of course, there's a number of ongoing projects, like Jennifer mentioned. So we're working on characterizing those projects and making sure that we lay them out properly in there as far as what they are, what the solution is, how long it's going to take, and what's the proper budget to get them to completion. So that way, the county could do some future planning and have a better idea about what the cost and what needs to be done for those projects. And then we get into implementing priority projects later on. Any questions really on this particular chart right here? This is, to me, one of the biggest remaining tasks that we have under the scope of work. And this is going to require some feedback. This is going to be the plan, the proposed plan for the county. Of course, that requires a lot of input and discussion. It's a living document right now. So really, again, I like to emphasize that this is what we're talking about here is a cyclical phase process. And that's very, very important because in order to implement this particular program, you can't just set it up and walk away from it. You have to really maintain it, and you have to kind of update it. You know, in other words, at a minimum, at a minimum, I would say, re-prioritize once a year. And then also at a minimum, look at the cycle of all of those projects and where you are funding-wise, all of them. Are they on schedule? Are they not? Why are they not on schedule? So you have a snapshot pretty much of all of them so you really understand which ones are lagging behind, which ones are not. What's the hang-up, that kind of thing? And then some of those projects, one of them may exit well, you have to enter. And then, some of those projects, one of them may exit, well, you have to enter. The big thing about the process, again, it provides a proactive, unified, strategic approach to plan, prioritize, and implement projects. It's iterative and transparent to stakeholders, I'm just kind of repeating what I've said before to kind of emphasize that fact. It relies heavily on the development and implementation of watershed plans. So when we're talking about going after some federal funds, that's the language nowadays. I mean, when you go to the NRCS and say, I want some money, it really helps out a lot to have what's called a comprehensive watershed plan, that factors in not just one site, all your sites. You could include in there a number of different needs for that particular watershed. It doesn't mean that you're gonna get the entire watershed funded, but at least it'll give you a better chance at really getting support for some of the key items in your watershed. So a lot of those watersheds that we have in here, one of our recommendations is going to be, is to really to develop some watershed plans for them. One of the recommendations we're gonna have is really to have a four-year cycle to go through this particular process, and also recommend annual updates of all the priorities, like I said. So the next steps, and this is really what we want to kind of end with, we'd like to receive...